Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Art Politzky.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Sollhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Bear.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, calling the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing, as the council will release this in print. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, our Father, we praise you and we thank you, you who love every man and guide all peoples, accompany the steps of our city, which are often difficult but are full of hope, let us see the signs of your presence and feel the force of your love that never fails. Lord Jesus, Son of God and Savior of the world, made man in the womb of the Virgin Mary, we confess to you our faith, may your gospel be light and strength for our personal choices and those of society, may your law of love lead our civil community to justice and solidarity, to reconciliation and peace, and continued blessings on all our Brooklyn residents, we ask this through Christ our Lord, from whom all good and wonderful things come. Remember our most gracious Virgin Mary that never was unknown, that anyone who fled to thy protection, implored thy help or sought thy intercession, was left unaided. Inspired by this confidence, we fly unto you, O Virgin of virgins our mother, to thee we come, before thee we stand, sinful and sorrowful. O Mother of the Word incarnate, despise not our petitions, but in thy mercy, hear and answer us, amen, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Ghost, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Bear. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the meeting dated October 9th, 2017. Are there any comments or questions regarding the minutes?
May they be recognized?
Yes.
Just one minor change, page three, first paragraph, at the end of the first line, it should read, "and check dates on newer model detectors," not batteries. I'll make a motion we approve as amended. Excuse me.
To approve as amended, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Sollhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
As I mentioned last meeting, the board docs is up and running, there is a link to it on the city's website under the City Council tab marked City Council Meeting, all agendas and legislation with their attachment will be there, and the current meeting is labeled as quote "featured" on that tab, and the previous meetings and board docs are there as well, they're under the 2018 tab, if you click the little plus sign on the right-hand side, you'll be able to see all of the meetings for 2018 that are on there, and I know that we're working on getting all the old meetings on there as well, but getting it up and running, the last meeting is on there as well as this one. At this time we'll have the public session, if anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address and you'll be recognized, please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Evening everyone, Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue, I know some people just love to hear me talk sometimes of some of this stuff. The one thing I'm bringing back up is street repair on South Amber, if they have clarification why they repaired some of the base in concrete and the other in asphalt where they definitely both expand and contract at different rates. Recycling, I was walking out this morning, the recycling truck went by, got my stuff out, and I'm looking at the one neighbor's recycling bin, it's overflowing, there was three bags of recycling and plastic trash bags, and the truck just picked it up and dumped it. And the other thing is the restroom here, I've mentioned it before, the cleaning, the restroom overall is clean, the urinal, I mean, it's gangrene with envy. Thanks, have a nice evening.
Rob Slattery, 4396 West 60 Second Street, I just want to know, I've spoken to some council members, I've driven by other people's houses and seen signs out in support of the school, I'd just like to know, Mr. Van Kirk, do you support the school levy? Will you openly come out and support that, because I know you've used our property before, but so I think it would be pretty hypocritical if you didn't support the levy.
Anything else to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn? Okay, we will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we'll begin this evening with the Finance Committee, we did meet just prior to tonight's meeting, and I will go over the things that are new to the agenda and things that are up for adoption this evening. The first thing, we had two grants that have been requested from both our Police Chief and our Fire Chief to receive here from the city of Brooklyn, the first one for the Police Department is a grant from Walmart for $2,500, and this grant, if accepted, would go to the Shop with a Cop program that the city has participated with in the past. And the second one was from the Fire Department, and this is also from Walmart for $2,500, and this will be used to purchase smoke detectors for Brooklyn, as well as some fire safety literature. Then up for a second reading but is up for adoption this evening under suspension of rules is Resolution 2018-9, this is requesting the county fiscal officer advance the tax proceeds from 2018, this is just basically a housekeeping item that will enable us to collect our taxes from the county fiscal officer. Next up is Ordinance 2018-76, and this will update what's known as a Board of Control here in the city of Brooklyn, and this ordinance is to put us in line with the Ohio Revised Code, and if I don't explain it enough, Mr. Butler, if you'd be so kind as to make sure I get this done correctly, but just going to read one of the parts here, whenever the approval for, one of the items that's on here is the Board will meet whenever there's contracts under which the city is obligated to pay more than $5,000 and any changes made to those contracts, and so again, this ordinance, there's several items in here that will change, but we're just making sure that our ordinances are in line with the Ohio Revised Code, and that's Ordinance 2018-76. Then another new item this evening, again, to make sure we're in line with the Ohio Revised Code, is Ordinance 2018-77, and this has to do with a credit card policy for the city of Brooklyn, State House Bill 312 was signed by the Governor recently, and that requires the city to have a formal credit card policy and procedure in place, as we do have a credit card. Previous to this, there has been no formal policy in place for the city of Brooklyn, we do have one credit card that's in the possession of the Finance Director, and this ordinance will lay out what the uses would be for that credit card. And then Ordinance 2017-78 is being asked to be passed by suspension of rules this evening, and that is to establish rental fees for the use of the city of Brooklyn's auditorium complex or the swimming pool. What this ordinance will do is will amend our current ordinance to allow for rental of an auditorium to all different types of groups, we currently rent the auditorium to groups on a per lane basis, and this ordinance would allow us to rent out other areas of the auditorium or the lanes on a per person basis, and so this will allow the city to have some more way of raising revenue and using our facilities to a better degree. And then lastly is Ordinance 2018-79, and this is on first reading this evening, and this is accepting the medical insurance renewal from Medical Mutual of Ohio and providing the insurance coverage for eligible employees from January 1st to December 31st of 2019, and also from Delta Dental for dental coverage from January 1st, 2019 through December 31st of 2020. And the good news is that there was no rate increase for our Medical Mutual plan going from 18 to 19, so it was a 0% increase, and that yearly rate is right in the tune of about $1.5 million for our coverage. Our dental coverage, we will see a 9% increase for 2019, but then a 0% increase for 2020, and our yearly rate for that is $110,000. And all Finance Committee meetings are held just prior to regularly scheduled meetings at 6:30 in the conference room, all are welcome to attend. At this time we'll move on to Recreation Board, and that will be Councilman Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, November 19th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilwoman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. On October 10th, the Domestic Abuse Commission met and discussed current news around the topic, the nonprofit Love Doesn't Shove, an update to hold an event in our schools, the Chamber Luncheon, and the donation drive, we will have our next and final meeting for 2018 on November 8th at 6 o'clock in the fire station. Earlier this month, actually the next day, I was the guest speaker at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, I shared some facts along with information for both individuals and businesses to help accomplish the mission's goal of ending the cycle. As Amy Sanchez from the national organization Break the Cycle says, "People need to understand that this is everybody's business, not just that of cops and judges alone. We all have an obligation to take this on." I want to thank Val from the Chamber for allowing me to speak at the luncheon about this important topic. And finally, the Domestic Abuse Commission is still collecting goods in honor of Domestic Abuse Awareness Month, the police station lobby has two boxes, one for used clothes in good condition and one for new toiletry goods, the boxes will be available for drop off until this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Coulson.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The Board of Zoning Appeals met this past Thursday, October 18th, to hear two requests from Michael Christopher, these are for variances for garage setback, two-foot variance to the minimum three-foot required for accessory structure, garage at 8914 Ansonia, the other variance was for a one-foot variance to the minimum three-foot required for the rear setback, same structure. The next meeting for the Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled for November 15th, these are at 6:00 PM here in the City Hall Conference Room. Thank you, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. School Board meeting was October 16th, 2018. Mr. Bill Wengler stated that he is an advocate of culture change, he then introduced a video made by the students as an example, there was singing and dancing, most of the student groups participated, unfortunately, after a few minutes of the video, the sound was gone, and the video was discontinued, I look forward to seeing the entire production if it can be fixed. Three young women told us the idea was to boost morale and to encourage school spirit. Two of the young women are seniors, and said that it was the first time they saw a good school spirit and would love to see it continue, they would like to see pre-K through 7 involved in the future. Per Mr. Wengler, students come up with great ideas if you give them the chance, the hallways have decorations so that everyone knows what's going on, he stated that the amazing thing was that no one has torn them down, students now get papers for being respectful in school, students are more respectful of each other, and the school board is hearing less incidents of bullying. Dr. Gleikhoff stated that first quarter ends on Friday, October 19, and that parents can now access report cards online, teachers will meet from K through 12 per their specialty to discuss, how do you teach at primary to get a student to higher learning in a given subject? English language arts teacher, Mr. Ken Ratamaker, was recognized as Brooklyn High School's October Teacher of the Month for setting a strong example in utilizing avid instruction strategies in the classroom, and showing positive support for his students at numerous school events. Mr. Ratamaker has been teaching at Brooklyn for 18 of his 19 years, teaching careers prior to this, he was a news producer at Channel 5 and 19, and produced Ramona's Kids for Channel 19. Brooklyn High School senior Jerry Okwendo was recognized by MathCor Cleveland with an Excellence in Teaching Award for displaying dedication, commitment, and hard work during the 2018 Summer Camp Program, the four-week program is hosted on campus at Cleveland State University. Congratulations to Middle School Football Team, they are pack champions, homecoming king and queen are Nick Vaughn and Amarisah Dents. Issue 3, a 6.9 mil continuous operating levy will be on the ballot November 6th, it will generate a little over $2 million a year, it can be used for permanent improvements, textbooks, personnel, et cetera. The tangible personal property tax has decreased and will soon be eliminated. A third forum to discuss levy questions will be held tomorrow, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the auditorium, please enter through door 18. You can also call Dr. Gleikhoff if you have any questions. The new School Board Treasurer, Mr. Haskin, is working with state legislators to advocate for changes in the way Brooklyn is viewed as an affluent community, he will continue his mission once the new Governor is in place, and that ends my report.
Thank you. The Plane Commission's next meeting will take place on Thursday, November 1st, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room, there's only one request on the agenda, and that's a request from Matthew L. Weber, PE, for final plan approval for a four-story, 85-room hotel on Tideman Road, permanent parcel 43309018 and 43309017, again, that is Thursday, November 1st, at 6:00 PM. We will now move on with reports of council, we'll begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Just on a quick note, a field trip is scheduled to pick up students from Polaris and Brooklyn High School from the digital electronics engineering class, and we'll be taking an educational trip through our well-constructed solar landfill site on Wednesday, October 24th, around noon. City Director Mike Verba will be attending along with Mike Foley, Director of Sustainability, Mike Wise, McDonald Hopkins, along with myself, all council are welcome, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk, good evening. Last Thursday, I attended the Oktoberfest Luncheon at Brooklyn Senior Center, as usual, the food was delicious, I spoke to many seniors from Brooklyn and the surrounding communities who told me how much they enjoy getting together for these events, if you have never had the opportunity to attend, please check it out, their Christmas get-together is coming up soon. I also attended the grand opening of Brooklyn Point on the same day, I saw many residents take advantage of the invitation, what a great alternative for seniors who find it difficult to live on their own, again, the food was great, two events and too much good food on the same day, glad that doesn't happen too often. Fall has finally arrived, but the trees are holding on to their leaves, let's hope the leaves fall before the snow flies, several years ago, tree limbs were broken when the heavy snow fell, and remember to get out and vote on November 6th, that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. I want to take time to thank the Service Department for opening their garage this past Saturday for an extra drop-off, my husband was able to clean out our garage a bit while I was out of town this weekend, and told me there was a line of residents doing the same thing, so thank you to those who worked to allow this to happen. And also, as I've mentioned before, and will continue to mention until November 6th, early voting has started, so be sure to do your part and inform yourself and the candidates and the issues that will be on your ballot and cast your vote, that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Sollhertz.
Thank you. The week of October 22nd through the 26th has been designated National School Bus Safety Week, this year's theme, My Driver, My Safety Hero, reminds motorists, students, and school bus drivers their important role they each have in ensuring children's safety. Prior to stopping, school buses display yellow warning lights that signify the bus is about to stop, once a bus stops, flashing lights and a stop sign are displayed, motorists approaching a stopped school bus from either direction require to stop at least 10 feet from the bus while the bus is receiving or discharging students, when the road is divided into four more lanes, only traffic driving in the same direction as the bus must stop, drivers must not resume their travels and the bus resumes traveling. From 2015 to 2017, 4,198 drivers were convicted of failing to stop or stop school buses in Ohio, during the same time, 4,037 traffic crashes involving school buses occurred. School buses remain the safest mode of transportation for students to and from schools, said Colonel Paul Pride, Ohio Highway Patrol Superintendent, along with the watchful eyes of our school bus drivers, the cooperation of motorists, parents, and children will make this a safe school year in Ohio. The greatest risk to children is when they are outside of the school bus, students need to wait for bus drivers signaled to cross and where the bus driver can see them. Thank you to our own Brooklyn Police Department for helping to make everyone sure is safe, there have been mornings when people seem to be in a hurry just to try to catch up at stuff, and you see the school bus going through the neighborhoods, there have been times where you'll see either a motorcycle officer or a patrolman in a car following the soup toolbox to make sure that the laws are obeyed. Continuing with the safety of the schools, the city of Brooklyn was awarded $70,221 from ODOT Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Grant, that would be to take public infrastructure improvements in benefit to Brooklyn City School District, the funding will make needed improvements to main campus crosswalk with new safety striping, additional signage to improve traffic flow, installation of pedestrian crossing beacons at Bit Off Road and Williamson Heather Lane, Butler Path Lane along Southwood Drive, and purchase of portable radar side beacons to monitor traffic speed near school zones. On Tuesday, October 30th, starting around 6:30 PM, the judges will be out for this year's Halloween House Decorating Contest, on this Wednesday, October 24th, the Brooklyn Historical Society will have their annual or their monthly meeting at 7:00 PM at 4442 Ridge, diver Kevin McGee from Clue, which is Cleveland Underwater Explorers will be present a program on the Great Storm of 1893 with a three-masted schooner that was named Riverside that sank in Lake Erie, and on November 9th, Friday, Post Prom Committee from Brooklyn High School will be holding a wingding night at Bleachers, costs is $25 per person, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you, good evening, I'd like to thank Mr. Ardito for his comments, Mr. Sollhertz mentioned the Safe Routes to School Grant, we applied for $398,100 for various projects, and as he mentioned, ODOT's going to fund $70,221, and while we would like to see 100% funding, these are really the most important components to the goal of keeping our students safe while walking and biking to school, and he already mentioned the portions that are going to be funded, I'd like to thank everyone who assisted, because this was really a team effort, from the schools, Susie Marquis and Laura Paul, and Mr. Udris, of course, and Mr. Sollhertz also assisted, along with Sergeant Nap, Officer Meadows with the support of Chief Milkie, Melinda Bartizal from ODOT, and Megan Conklin from the Cuyahoga County Board of Health, I appreciate everyone's efforts on this, these funded improvements will be for the state fiscal year 2021, which means we will complete the project between July 1st, 2020, and June 30th, 2021. Big Creek Connects is sponsoring an Autumn Walk in Brooklyn, it's going to be on Saturday, October 27th, that's the Saturday from 11 to 1, it is a short walk, just a half a mile, but it's an off-trail tour, so expect some uneven terrain, they're advising if you're going to attend to dress for the weather and walking off-trail, that it is a bit more rugged than their usual walks, the property is on Bit Off Road, and it's located between 10316 Bit Off and 10408, about 1,300 feet east of Tideman, it's actually right across the street from Fairway, there is no parking on Bit Off, so please park on Fairway, and there's also no restroom facilities, but there will be refreshments, they are asking if you're planning on attending the walk, to sign up by October 25th by calling Bob Garden at 216-661-7706, or emailing him at B Garden, G-A-R-D-I-N, at bigcreekconnects.org. I'd like to thank Director Ragus, we had a good meeting about a week and a half ago, thank you, I appreciate your time, I think it was a good meeting. Regarding Issue 3, Mrs. Politzky already mentioned that the final financial forum is going to be tomorrow, October 23rd at 6:00 PM. I did attend the first two meetings, and I would encourage residents, if you are able to make it, please attend, there are some very good information shared, and another thing is, at both forums, there were a lot of really excellent questions from residents that prompted very good discussion, however, if you can't attend, it is on the city, I'm sorry, the district's website, which is www.brooklyn.k12.oh.us. I would also like to recommend, or excuse me, welcome Brooklyn Point to Brooklyn, this project, as we all know, has been a long time in coming, I've been on council for 20 years, and an assisted senior living complex on that property was actually proposed before I even got on council, so I am just thrilled that they are here, I was not able to attend the grand opening because of a work commitment, but I look forward to dropping by for a tour, it looks like a really beautiful facility. And I'd like to congratulate former resident and retired firefighter Dennis Peening, and resident and school board member Rocky Neal, last week, they were both inducted into the Greater Cleveland Softball Hall of Fame, Cleveland was very well-known, and some people used to refer to it as the softball capital of the world, and there have been many great players from this region, so it's really quite a distinction to be inducted into this Hall of Fame, so congratulations to both gentlemen, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Pucci, next up is Mrs. Bell Bear.
Thank you. As you know, our general election in Ohio is November 6th, and I'm sure all of you are getting deluged in the mail with political literature of all kinds to vote for this person or that issue, I just wanted to comment on the one statewide issue that is on the ballot, Issue 1 is entitled, "To Reduce Penalties for Crimes of Obtaining, Possessing, and Using Illegal Drugs." The actual full text of this proposed constitutional amendment is several pages long, and I urge all voters to read through it, among other places, the full text was published in The Plain Dealer Sunday, and will also be published in the next two Sunday papers. The broad purpose of this proposed constitutional amendment is to address the continuing escalating opiate and drug problem in our state, and the attendant prison overpopulation. Last year in Ohio, there were 4,854 people that died of drug overdoses, that's over 13 people every day that die in Ohio of an overdose. As to prison population, Ohio has the 15th highest rate of imprisonment in the nation, and our prison population is currently at 132% of capacity. The amendment seeks to establish sentence reduction of up to 25% if the inmate participates in rehabilitative, work, or educational programming, this good time would not be available for major crimes like murder, rape, or child molestation. The bill is primarily geared to our drug problem, and helping the addict deal with their problems rather than just be locked up. The amendment would provide that possessing and using drugs no longer be felonies, but misdemeanors. It would also prohibit jail time for possessing or using drugs until an individual's third offense within 24 months. This amendment is for the benefit of individual addicts, geared to help them and rehabilitate them, the traffickers and sellers would continue to be facing harsh penalties, the money that is saved by the benefits of reducing the prison population is earmarked for programs to help cure addiction. There seems to be many, many reasonable points of view on both sides arguing over this issue, The Plain Dealer and Governor Kasich have said that while ideas in Issue 1 are good, it has no place in the Constitution because it would be so difficult to update if necessary. Various judges and law enforcement organizations oppose it, while various mental health and drug rehab organizations favor it. The specifics of the proposed issue are far-reaching, and I urge you to read the entire amendment language carefully, the drug and opiate crisis in our state and the whole country is almost mind-boggling, also, prison overcrowding in Ohio has long been a serious problem, you decide on November 6th if Issue 1 will benefit you or not. I'd also like to welcome Brooklyn Point to our city, I wasn't able to go to the warming, the homecoming warming this past Thursday, I was working late too, but I drove by Saturday morning, and I saw a car there, and I decided to pull in, well, I pulled in and I had a wonderful conversation with the Director of Nursing, she took me on an entire tour of the place, the facility is magnificent, it is so bright and cheery and sunny, I want to live there sometimes, I was thinking that that's not a bad place to live at all, it looks beautiful. It looks beautiful. It looks like a spa. If you get a chance, please go there and visit. The wonderful director of nurses, Danielle, like I said, took me around. There's a spa there. There's a garden there. There's a movie theater with beautiful individualized chairs and cup holders. There's a beautiful family gathering room. All the furnishings were done by a designer out of Chicago. It's just elegant, just elegant and spacious. There's a hair spa. It's wonderful that Brooklyn has this. There's 18 rooms that are going to be in memory care, and that's for those that are suffering from Alzheimer's. There's also suites that couples can stay together, and they're very spacious. The rooms are huge, and there's like a little dinette and huge bathrooms. So, I do welcome them, and I wish them a lot of success. And they're starting to have residents come in at the end of October, early November. I don't know if it's totally full now or whatever, but they seem like they're still taking applicants. So, if you get a chance, go by and see it. It's absolutely just wonderful. A comment about issue three. I know everybody's up and down about it, but I'll just tell you my take on it. As a mom, as a parent who's educated kids, drove to lessons all over Timbuktu, and just tried to give the kids everything, and not anything they wanted, but just to make them better people. I always liked the kids, every other kid had the same opportunities my kids had. And I'm hoping that this issue two does pass. I am supportive of it. I mean, I don't know what the mistakes or what are misunderstandings or people are worried about, but you're helping a kid. And there's something about helping a kid that I really love to do. I love to see how they prosper later and how they've taken that education and made something of themselves. So, that's just my take. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Belvair. Just a couple of things I wanted to tell residents, and I want to thank Mrs. Belvair. She explained that issue one again. I went through that entire thing in detail in our last council meeting. It is a big issue. And as she said, there are good people on both sides that are both for and against it. And I would encourage, as I mentioned last time, I would encourage voters to take a look at it. It is a very, very important issue. Anytime you talk about amending the Constitution of our state, it's a big deal. And so, it is long. If you read the ballot language, actually, it's on the ballot. It's extremely long. Right? But make sure that you understand it. The commercials that are on both for and against it, I mean, they're obviously trying to sway you one way or the other, but I would encourage residents to do the research. I did come across a really good website this last week when I was doing my own research. There's a lot of candidates on there on the ballot this time. And there's a website called ivoterguide.com, and it's across the nation. But if you type in the 44144 zip code, it will bring up information about all the federal, the statewide, and the state races. And it does not include, unfortunately, the common police judges, so you have to dig a little bit further into those. But you can do a side-by-side comparison of all of the candidates that are on the ballot. And my wife got her early voting ballot in the mail, and it's like, I think it's, I want to say it's four pages, and two pages front and back, so it's very lengthy. And so, of course, being an educated voter is encouraged. Regarding issue three, I said the same thing since I've been on council. Every time a school issue comes up here, I do not endorse or go out against any school levy issue from the council floor. That has been my position for the seven years I've been on council, and I'm certainly not going to deviate from that position now. I do appreciate the question, but that has been my stance. I've been consistent with that, and will continue that consistency throughout my time here on council. And that's all I have this evening, and I'll move on now with the mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I know that the Hurricane Alley mound was discussed at the last meeting and sort of lengthy discussion. I did meet with Superintendent Glykoff, along with our building commissioner, Dave Colstar, and he informed us that they will be leveling that within the next couple of months. So, I think that could kind of cloche that discussion. I know Mr. Tansky received something from residents in that area asking for this request, so they are taking care of it. I have reached out to one of the residents in that area and let her know. So, you can, if you can let the other couple of people know. Also, I just want to reiterate about the Oktoberfest last week. You know, our senior center does such a terrific job with some of the events that we put on. This is one of our annual ones. The seniors love coming out, getting together, doing the dances with each other. And our staff over at the senior center just do a tremendous job. And more importantly, I say this every time, our volunteers do a tremendous job, and without them, we couldn't hold these big events. So, again, thank you to our volunteers who helped put this together. Also, I would like to, again, repeat, this Brooklyn Point, I had a chance to go out there for, this is probably my third time because they have had a lot of events, but this was their grand opening. They were able to do all their finishing touches, and they just, it looks terrific. I couldn't have asked to work with such better staff in there through Meridian. But more importantly, the owners, Steve and Alan, they have been terrific to work with over the last year and a half. They've come through with all of their promises. And, you know, we've had some issues with residents on Elizabeth Lane who have had nothing in their backyard for so many years, and they've taken care of all the issues. Any resident request, they've fulfilled that. So, it's been a great organization to work with, and I'm looking forward to them being a good partner in our community for years to come. I want to thank the guys from the service department that came in this past Saturday for the cleanup day. Mr. Verba had informed me that 83 carloads was dropped off from residents, so that's fantastic. I know this was one of the asks through our survey process, so we made it an effort to have two Saturday openings, and both were successful. I know John is working on setting up dates for next year, as well as another shred day, so we can have it in our calendars, everyone can write those dates down, because it was worthwhile to bring them in for those days. I mentioned last week, I've identified the steering committee for the master plan. I announced those names at the last meeting. But the first meeting for that steering committee will be Tuesday, October 30th, at 6:30 PM here in this room. Along with that, working on a survey that will go out to the residents of the community. As I stated again, we just did a survey two years ago, so we're trying not to repeat some of the same questions. It's really going to focus on zoning, economic development, recreation areas, different topics that we're going to hone in on that we weren't able to capture in that last survey. So, if you are one of the residents that receives the survey, please fill it out. We want your feedback. We are trying to look for that as a good guide, especially for that steering committee, to make some of the important decisions for our community for years to come. And then, last thing, I want to remind everyone that our fire department will be having a Veterans Day breakfast, so if you're a veteran or your spouse want to come out, on Sunday, November 11th, they will be cooking breakfast for you from 9:00 AM to noon. So, thank you for all the vets for serving in our country, and please come out and take advantage of it at our fire department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now move on with the registry reports. We begin this evening with our finance director, Mr. Verba.
Good evening. Just a reminder that our capital budget workshop is on October 29th, a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our fire chief, Chief Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening, everybody. I just want to remind everybody, Sunday, November 4th is the end of daylight savings time. Please remember to change the batteries in your smoke detectors before going to bed on Saturday. If for some reason you need assistance, please contact the fire department. We'll come out and assist you. That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our final report this evening is our voting commissioner, Commissioner Colstar.
Thank you. I'm going to keep mine short, too. I just wanted to let everybody know in this season of political signs that we do have some ordinance to follow, and always remember that you can put signs anywhere on your property, but the tree lawn is the right of way, and there are no signs that are permitted in that location. And if you can remove them after the elections, that would be great. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to legislation. We begin this evening with a request to accept a $2,500 Walmart grant. I have a letter here from the police chief city council. I'm requesting permission to accept a $2,500 grant from Walmart. The grant will be used for our shop with the cop program, and that comes from our police chief. Any comments or questions?
Move to accept the grant.
Second.
To accept the grant, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
On second reading this evening is Resolution 2018-8, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County General Health District for Health Services for the years 2019 and 2020. Also on second reading, but we do hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening, is Resolution 2018-9, requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2018 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Any comments or questions?
Introduce the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
On our new business this evening, Ordinance 2018-76 is on first reading, amending Chapter 155 of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to bring the city's board of control into alignment with the Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance 2018-77, also on first reading, adopting a policy for the use of the City of Brooklyn credit cards pursuant to Revised Code 921A.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Do we want to amend that tonight?
For the, we have to say the finance director, excuse me, I'll make a motion to amend in section N, the first line, to add the word "submit." So, it will read, "The finance director shall submit an annual report with city council."
Second. To amend, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yep.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-78 is, we hope to pass this evening, and by suspension of the rules, this is to establish rental fees for the use of the City of Brooklyn auditorium complex swimming pools for use by various groups and organizations. Any comments or questions? Introduce the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
I'm sorry. To adopt, Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sullards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Thank you.
Then finally this evening is Ordinance 2018-79 is on first reading, accepting the